Thank you. Good evening. We will call to order the Planning Commission hearing of June 18th, 2024. Let us start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of its borders. We have, before, before we cover official business, we would like to let the room and the virtual room be aware that several items have been removed from our agenda this evening. PLPC 2024-0010, that's 3032 and 42 Second Street, also known as the Troy Savings Bank Music Hall, has been removed from the agenda for this evening. PLPC 2024-0008, 125 River Street, also known as the Taylor Apartments 2, has been removed from the agenda. And PLPC 2024-0024, 230 Second Street, which was a sketch plan conference for 77 Adams Street, will be removed from the agenda. Therefore, we have one applicant in front of us this evening. This is old business, PLPC 2022-0045, Dunleer Drive Extensions. Before we ask the applicant to approach the podium and present the project, let us recognize that we have received and reviewed meeting minutes from the May Planning Commission hearing. And commissioners, if you would bring to our attention any, any errors that warrant correction? Or make a motion, please, to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? I. Oh, thank you Suzanne. Okay, and the four of us who just voted I, present. Let's take the roll call. Bill Kaminski, Suzanne Spellen, Stephen Maple, and Sarah Engert. Okay, thank you. So for PLPC 2024, sorry, 2022-0045, the applicant Country Gardens, I believe, is represented by their engineer. If you would approach the podium. And as soon as Eric lets us know that any content that should be shared is shared, please feel free to proceed with your presentation.
Sure thing. Roger Keating from La Bella Associates here tonight on behalf of Country Gardens. With me tonight is also Dave Brennan, partner at Young Sumner. He's counsel for the applicant. Tonight, we have before you is the Dunleer Drive subdivision extension. Dunleer Drive currently has a cul-de-sac that ends where there's two parcels at the end of that cul-de-sac right now that are two single-family building lots with a larger tract of land directly behind them. In the packet that you had, and I just put a little splash of color on the same maps that you could, that I had provided in the packet, just so that you could see some contrast here. We are looking to do a 19 lot subdivision or 19 building lots with two stormwater lots, so 21 lots. Two of those again being reserved for stormwater management, the balance being for residential. The site has right off of Dunleer Drive, there's two zoning designations. There's the neighborhood one zoning designation, which where you'll see the first three homes as you come off of Dunleer Drive. And then they transition to the neighborhood two district. And Eric has it up on the screen. And the, and then really the difference that you see is just the way the lot configurations are set up. The two different zoning districts have different setback requirements. And as such, we have a little bit different style building for the first three, and then a townhome style building for the balance of the site. Once again, we'll be extending Dunleer Drive to take the cul-de-sac where it currently stops today and bring it inward into the, into the site. The three parcels in total are around 11 acres in size. As you can see from the map here, which is the overall, you can see kind of the entire back half of the site is remaining all wooded. Really, we're just keeping the developed area on the right-hand side of the page, as you see on the screen here as well. Site serviced by water and sewer at the end of the cul-de-sac today. So we'll simply be extending those services in, into the project site. We'll have a looped water connection over to, I believe it's Sterling. I want to make sure I have the street names correct, which will help improve some of the water up in that area as well, because now the development, as well as the surrounding neighborhood, will have two feeds of water coming in and out. And sanitary sewer will be brought up to the manhole that's at the end of Dunleer Drive. And then lastly, we have stormwater management. As I stated before, we are disturbing over an acre of land. So as such, we have to comply with New York State DC stormwater regulations. We've prepared a SWIP that's been provided to the engineering office. That's currently under review as well. And then lastly, I'll just note that we're not seeking any variances for this project. All the lots would be conforming in, in, in conformance with the two zoning codes that are, that are here. And we just asked the board tonight to consider starting the SEACER process and look to schedule public hearing. So with that, I'll turn this back over to the board for any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start by opening the mic to any of my fellow commissioners who have questions for the applicant.
I just want to like do a little bit of a clarification. So this is old business, but we're starting SEACER anew. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Just to clarify, it was, it was brought in as a sketch conference last year. And there is an additional component of this proposal that extended off of Grant Ave. The applicant, after receiving staff comments and reports, decided to table indefinitely and go back and, and review their, their, their proposal and their, and their plans. And this new, this new version is more or less fresh. But it is still, still a contingent of their past.
Gotcha.
It's, it's, it's part of their past proposal. We didn't designate a new planning number for them.
When we were before, it was just sketch. We had not received any public comment for that. We did get to staff review. We did get some public comment as part of just staff review. And then that's when the applicant, you know, hearing all the, the comments from staff and engineering, fire, so on and so forth. We, we relooked at that and then we really came back to the original thing that was before the board. And really, the difference between the plan that was then and now is that the zoning districts are a little different because the zone changed. So we just revised the lot lines and such to be more conforming with what, what's now in the zoning code. Hopefully, that clarifies it.
There were a number of, there are a number of letters that were sent in from the public as well. I believe they're probably in your Google Docs file. I can, I can pull them up, you know, if you'd like and figure out which.
There'll be another opportunity for public comment once we're past the, once we declared complete and take whatever necessary steps are to get there. So that's, I don't think we need that to move. I was just trying to to have my recollection refreshed or to learn for the first time if I wasn't there in the last time.
Yeah, maybe actually that's a good, that's a good point though. Maybe the applicant could clarify some of the updates as you guys had it before and what you guys took out of the proposal and how it's, has changed.
Sure. You know, as it relates to the top, you really don't see anything different, you know, for this, this portion of the site other than the lot configuration is a little bit different. But generally speaking, the, the plan as you see it is similar to what was as part of sketch, just with revisions based upon the zoning and such. And then as, as we just discussed, as it relates to the, to area off of Grant Avenue, that's just not on the table anymore. We've, we've withdrawn everything that's a part of that, that project. So really, there's, there's, it's very similar to what was part of sketch, just revised with some zoning.
I could, I can get you whatever material. I believe it was, I believe it was around this time last year, but I'll, I'll dive into those files for you, send you all those links to the month that we received all the public comment.
That would be helpful, sure.
I might be wrong, but your last project, was that the one that was, there's a big drop in the topography? And that was the big issue with the neighbors?
So there was a lot of topography on the, we're on the top here, the, the, the top portion off of Dunleer Drive. There's a, there's a flatter area here at the top where the extension is taking place. Topography as it goes down towards Grant Avenue and across the other property. Most certainly, there's grade changes you go down to the, to the lower ends. And that is something else that we haven't taken into consideration.
Okay, it's just kind of hard to visualize right now, but this, we'll get there.
Any other comments? Or questions?
Yeah, I've got just a couple. There's, there's several mentions of sensitive wetlands and things. And saying there's assertions of there, there won't be negative effects, but I'm just sort of, what's, what's the reasoning behind that? What's the feeling that it will, it won't be?
Sure.
Won't have an impact?
Absolutely. Yeah. So as part of the project, our wetland scientists and biologists have visited the site to take a look at where those are on, on the site so that we can work for avoidance. So for instance, you can see this gray shaded area that you see on the map here. You can see that there's some wetlands located in those areas and we're looking to stay outside of those areas. We're not planning any wetland impacts as part of the project. We're looking to stay outside of all the wetland areas that are here. So one of the things that we did, we went out and took a look, see what we had. We are in an area where we're, we're kind of on the outside of where the threatened endangered species actually are on the radii. But we, we noted it there just because they are in the area. And so we're having our ecological people, you know, just take a look at the site, you know, from that perspective as well. So the key being is, is just trying to work out of the sensitive areas and stay off the slopes and where the ground is a little bit better. And one of the comments that we worked with the engineering office is to help with some slopes, slope stability. So one of the things that we'll be preparing here with engineering is to just go through some of the geotech that we've done so that we can work with him on, on what he may need just so that he feels comfortable with those items.
Excellent. You've touched on all the things that are, are top of my mind. So to whatever extent, and I know we, we've got the SWIP with engineering, but any, any other documentation? I'd love to see, I mean, that may, it may be included here. It may not be. I'm trying to sift through the entire thing. But I am mostly concerned about the, the, the watersheds, not just during construction, but also, you know, the long-term impacts to the watershed and the wetlands. This, for certain, for certain, the slope and the endangered species that you mentioned. And I, I take, I take your point that they're nearby. They're not in the area that you're planning to disturb. But I would, I would just again, love to see some, some, this is just something to back that up and assuage my concerns that like, where, that this, this project won't inadvertently have those impacts.
Sure thing. And again, that's part of what we do is part of looking at a project early on is to have our professionals, you know, go out to the site. So then we know where those things are early on in the process so that we can look to avoid them when we're going through the site planning activities. So versus having, putting lots in areas where there would be wetlands or something and then having to take those out later, but we, let's do that now, have that upfront. So happy to, happy to work with the staff to get whatever information you may need.
Excellent. And then I have just one sort of site plan suggestion that, that I would love to see is, I, I recognize that the, the rest of Dunleer Avenue does not have any sort of sidewalks, but I would still put in a, a call for installing those sidewalks. Hopefully in the future, that could be addressed in, you know, on the rest of Dunleer. But that would be a suggestion that I would have.
Okay, no taken.
I would like to build upon that suggestion. And, and that is bringing to our attention a letter that was issued by CDTA Planning, looking for a pedestrian path. And I am, I am reading, not paraphrasing, "A pedestrian path to connect the dead end of the street to other streets or to plan for one to be built in the future. In this case, a connection to Thomas Street might be best." So would you mind explaining to us how that might be achieved? Is it feasible in your immediate analysis?
I would say if I have my bearings straight, Thomas is down page or off page left, left. And the topography for getting a pedestrian way through the wooded area, which is not on this parcel. Now granted, it is controlled by our, by the applicant. However, I don't see a feasible, a real feasible way to get a sidewalk from up there without it switching back, you know, a million times and then disturbing a lot more ground as, to do so. And you would be walking, you know, through the wooded areas to, you know, from top to bottom. So it, it's not immediately something that I would think is feasible.
Are you suggesting a sidewalk or just a, a walking path, a trail?
Well, a trail sounds really cool, but.
It does sound, I mean, it sounds cool and it'd be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
It, it does, but it's, it's beyond the property line. So.
Pathway and sidewalk are, I guess, two different things, you know, from that perspective. If you're, if we're looking at like a dedicated like walkway, you know, from top to bottom as it relates to having a sidewalk or something, I don't, I don't see that as something that you would want to encourage, like an ADA try accessible type of route down that hill. That's, that's pretty rough.
So kind of flipping that around. Do you know where the nearest bus stop is to this property? And then going right back to, to Stephen's idea of providing a sidewalk, can we connect this new neighborhood to an existing bus stop? And if you don't know, you can just study it.
I will study it, but I believe up off of the, where the industrial park road is, I believe there is a bus stop over in that, I will confirm that for you, you know, for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I just have to ask, if, there isn't any architecture proposed on this project, correct?
There's no architecture proposed for the project.
Okay, I just, when I see the door swings, that means building to me. So you're just showing the, maybe the maximum area that could be built up given the way that you're organizing.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could have taken, these are units that we've used on other sites that seem to fit close to that. We could have just put boxes to that extent. But we don't have any finalized architecture, you know, just yet. We, we're still in the beginning here.
Well, may I ask, will the architecture be part of this project? Or are we, are you just proposing subdivision?
I'm gonna jump right in. Sorry to interrupt, but single-family homes are exempt from site plan review. So we will only be reviewing this as subdivision. And that's pretty much the extent of it for the, for the, for the time being. Unless they propose to do some multifamily homes in some regard, single and two-family homes, do, do not check the box for site plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's a suggestion I tried to make when we were passing the zoning, but did not get my way on that.
Also, just to confirm, having just been driving through the neighborhood, I did not see sidewalks in that neighborhood, which would be, I guess problematic, you're trying to connect sidewalks on this particular project to anything existing. So we're kind of dealing with a little limited batch here.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
It, it definitely would be. It's, you know, more of an aspirational, hopefully at some point in the future, redevelopment or something would happen. You know, it, it's, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do what I can for walkability, given that there's not a lot in the law that can help us out here.
Tough for a single-family to live in there.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. And I, I recognize that. So that, that's why I'm making a suggestion and not, there's no demand here because it's.
Well, actually, I, I reached out to CDTA regards to the closest bus stop and they informed me that it's something of a desert over in that area. So well, that's odd because Hudson Valley is so close by. So I think that their letter is noteworthy, you know, because they're, they're identifying that fact. But also I guess there's a recent construction project on Campbell Avenue to start providing sidewalks. So I guess we're starting somewhere, right?
Exactly, exactly.
So, so where is the nearest bus stop? Is there anything that runs along Campbell Avenue?
Yes, is that, I think there is something on Campbell. It's in that area. I'd have to look at the Cross Street.
So to, so to get there, you, you come up Dun, Dunleer, walk down, down and go, and then you're on Campbell.
Might be at the intersection where the industrial park road meets up with Campbell.
Up there, so it's a block up farther.
We'll confirm. We, we'll, we'll dig into it for you.
Thank you. And I'm sure that you've seen the staff report. There are a series of staff recommendations. We don't need to go through all of them. I'm sure that you will take several of them under advisement and also simply deliver on some of the requests. But I am curious as to the dead ending of the water line. Does, does that pose any complications? Or is there a solution there?
There are a couple of solutions. And one of them that I mentioned, and we've been working with, with engineering a little bit on this, is that currently Dunleer Drive dead ends today. But there's, there's an opportunity for us to loop the water to Sterling that's right over there. That would allow that development to be fed, not just this site, but the whole development to be fed from another source of water. So if there was a breakup on the other end, they could isolate that out. Water could come from Sterling back into the site. So that's one of the things currently that we're working with engineering on. So we can, we can reduce some of the, the dead end effect that you, that you're talking about. So we're, we're working on it. We're not done yet, but we're working.
Okay, thank you. And then I think that the final point that I have is actually probably directed to Eric to clarify for us what it, what it takes for the applicant to obtain approval from the city council for the road.
I was just discussing that with Rick. Probably, you know, we could formally refer them to the city council for the adoption of any proposed roadways. I don't believe it needs to be made a motion, but Rick could probably confirm that, but a referral wouldn't hurt.
Should be on the top there.
Right on the top. Upside.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, the applicant must go to the city council in order to have an ordinance passed dedicating the road and accepting the dedication. And then the road will have to meet all city specifications. I'm not sure, you know, winged asphalt curving current would meet our current specifications or not, but engineering will advise on that.
And typically, road won't be completely dedicated and conveyed until construction of the road is complete and accepted from an engineering perspective. So once it's been inspected and meets all the requirements, then it can go to council for formal dedication at that point. You may have an understanding in advance, but.
You, you may, you may want to get an understanding in advance because.
Agreed. I'm, I'm just saying, but like, they don't.
If they don't accept you, it's your road.
Correct, but you don't, you don't, the road's not, the road doesn't actually leave the site's hands until you check all those boxes.
I understand that.
Gotcha. So I put my engineering hat on every now and then it happens.
And to that end, my, my reading of, of 28518I says that we can insist on a written agreement between the applicant and the city as approved by the city council covering the future title and dedication of improvements as well as the, as well as provision for the future costs of grading, development, equipment, fixtures, and maintenance of any park, playground, street, road, and other area facility. So we do have that latitude to say, okay, this road will be, you know, in decent shape according to the, you know, when engineering signs off on it and says it's great. My, my reading of this says that we could, we could, we could make a requirement to have, set aside some money for the maintenance of that road for the future. A move that I think that would be a positive, a positive thing for this, for the state of the city's finances and alleviate some of the long-term structural costs of this type of development.
So my quest, my question then is such a requirement might be something that you could come back to. Let me start over. The next time that you come before us on behalf of this applicant, you might include as part of your proposal the understanding that you will execute an agreement to maintain the road. Or in the absence of such inclusion, the Planning Commission might make that a stipulation of the approval of the site plan and the subdivision, I should say. So something for you to take under consideration at this time.
We'll work with council on that as well, just so that we're all under, get, starting to get out of a little my zone. So.
Fair enough. I have no further questions other than to my fellow commissioners with regard to the completion, the completeness of the application, knowing that there are still work items to be resolved. the completeness of the application, knowing that there are still work items to be resolved. In general, do we agree that the application is complete? And if so, can we have a motion to identify it as such?
I'll move to declare the application.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, we have the opportunity to declare ourselves the lead agency under Seeker. Do I have a motion with that regard? Do I have a motion? I'll second. Okay, and I'll take a vote, Bill.
No, I'm in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. And so this is an unlisted action. Do we? Do we? Do we make any additional declarations? And if so, at this meeting? Or shall we do so once the public hearing has taken place?
Uh, yeah, that, that's correct. The, the next motion that you're going to want to make is to schedule a hearing. But as in terms of Seeker, there's nothing left to be done tonight.
Because it's unlisted.
Well, yes, as it's. Yeah, the unlisted nature won't really trigger anything further tonight. But, you know, I, I mean, that kind of contends with a type one action, right? But, but, but for this, yeah, I mean, you're, we'll want, we'll want a list of agencies that you're working with. But in terms of a formal motion, like that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
This commences by declaring yourself lead agency, you simply commence the formal notice period for other agencies which may or may not be involved. And there's no, it also commences the review process, so.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, and therefore, we will schedule the next hearing and give you the opportunity to opt for the July planning commission meeting or an undefined, undetermined time in the future. What would your preference?
Well, I think, I had talked to Eric a little bit about this because we want to make sure that we get a few of the staff comments addressed for you before the next meeting. And knowing that the delivery date is next Tuesday for that meeting, I don't think we'll have those materials ready for that meeting. So I would ask if we could be put on the next regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting after the, after the July.
So August.
So we did talk about that because he warned me that we're on a short period this month, so.
August 21st.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to schedule that?
I, we'll do it anyway. I'll motion to, uh, table to the August 21st meeting.
Would that be the public comment as well?
It, it will be the public hearing, yes.
Public hearing scheduled.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, voting? Aye. Unanimous, all four of us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
I mean, you do have the option if anyone came to talk about it, if they wanted to in a non-official manner. But I don't know if anyone wants to talk about it. Or you can just, you can entertain a motion into it.
Uh, may I ask if, is there anyone in the room or the virtual room who had attended this meeting with the intent of speaking in any capacity directly to this proposal we just heard, PLPC 20220045? Please feel free to approach the podium and state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Clement LaPetra, 17, Dunleer Drive. I had a question, I saw the plan, I don't know if I can talk anymore. Well, clarification on the ravine, what's going to happen with that ravine? That's right. That's right here, there's no way you're gonna know anything.
Yep, and sir, is that your, is that your only question?
No, I have a follow-up.
Okay, okay, so why don't we let the applicant respond to, actually, why don't you give your other question? Because you're addressing, because you're addressing us, so why don't you tell us?
Sorry, addressing you.
It's okay.
I, I guess clarification also on the road, once this spoke coming out on Grant Avenue, is that correct?
That, that's been changed.
That's been changed to what?
To what you see here.
So it's just a, it's a dead end with a nice generous turnaround area.
Oh, so, so it's gonna be extended with another cul-de-sac?
No, there's no, there's no through traffic. It's a new development with a new roadway that has a little.
That circle is the.
Circle at the end, it's a one-way in and one-way out.
The very right of that, of that page is where, at the very right, very, very, all the way to the right, all the way to the right, all the way to the right, right there, that is the current cul-de-sac. That's the end of the current cul-de-sac. The. But that's the new cul-de-sac.
You're saying the original one end right here?
Sorry, okay, so that's, now this ravine, that stays empty, right?
According to their plans. Correct.
Okay, all right, so, so there is going to be no access from here, everything stops right here.
That's what's being proposed, yes.
And, and lots are gonna start further down, I, I.
Okay, I got the clarification, thank you.
I, I, again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it that well, but now.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like me to just expand upon that?
Sure, thank you very much.
No problem. So the intent is to, once again, not get onto those slopes where they're really steep, where the ravine is.
But excuse me, I, I think it's hard to hear you in the back of the room, so yeah.
Really, really sorry, really sorry. Yeah, we'll get right in there. We're going to avoid those slopes with the way the development is planned. He had mentioned the Grant Avenue piece, that was part of a past thing which would have gotten on some of those slopes. We're now off of those slopes. And, and yes, we are just extending the cul-de-sac into, into the adjacent site and not going down the hill.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Marvelous.
All right, thank you so much for your patience at the beginning and your cooperation at the end. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone.